I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of Monday, June 9th, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Here.
Alderman Dash.
Here.
Alderman Dolek.
Here.
For the pledge, I just want to ask if everybody could turn their phones on airplane mode because I guess it makes static and then the tape won't have any sound to it. So if you can change your phones, airport mode, we appreciate it.
Airport mode.
Approval of minutes, we need a motion to approve the May 27th, 2025 City Council's special meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no presentations. We do have an appointment, a reappointment of Joe Furito as Commissioner of the Police and Fire Commission. He submitted a letter to me, which is in the packet, asking for a reappointment. His term was up. So if there's any questions or I'd look for a motion to reappoint him.
Some moves, Anderson.
Second, Morgan Adams.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item six, public comments on agenda matters. The deputy clerk.
Yes, the first slip is Christine Shield.
Okay, I'm Christine Shield. I'm a local girl. One of the usual best. Okay, so Christine Shield, one of the showmen. So I had a really nice meeting with Pat earlier today. And I want to start by apologizing to the council for any role that I played in confusing the priorities of the residents. It's a confusing and frustrating process to us residents who haven't really done any of this before. And I've lived here for 25 years and I've never, I've never been to a city council meeting, I've never been part of any process. I just trusted you guys to do what you do and take care of my interests and you've always done that admirably. So this is my first foray into this. I don't understand what it's like to be in your seat and to do what you do. I really, really don't. But I am glad that people like you step up and do this job. Really, I really appreciate that you guys are here doing what you do to make this a nice place to live. I think as residents, when we feel sometimes that our way of life is threatened, that it's natural for us to sort of join together with people of similar interests so that we can advocate for all of us. And I think what maybe happened is that then I came across to you guys as sort of jumbled and confusing priorities as to what the residents wanted. And I apologize if I contributed to that confusion. I really didn't want to. And I think we should work together on this. So I wrote this late speech, I'm not going to read any of it tonight. I'm just going to talk about the two things that matter the most to me right now. I'm really, really concerned about the limit of 75 permits. The reason is I have a lot of money invested in my chicken coop. And when I sell my house, I expect to recoup some of the value of that chicken coop that I invested in, just like any other ancillary structure such as a chenner or garage. Restricting them on our licenses means that somebody interested in buying my house, and I do believe with my heart that people come to this community because it is a place where people are allowed to have backyard, or have always been allowed to have backyard chickens. When people come to buy my house, the buying chicken coop is a selling point. And if the person that is interested in buying my coop can't get a license, then it is actually going to drive people away from buying my house because they're going to be stuck, then no one's going to want to buy a house with a chicken coop that they can't use. So the limiting of the license really, really concerns me. Additionally, I've been, I've had poultry for 25 years, but if I ever decide not to, that's going to create a situation of license hoarding. I'm going to need to keep my license because if I give it up, like let's say I get sick or I want to go spend time with my daughter in Kentucky because she has a new baby, or I just have a lot of work going on for a couple of years and I decide, you know what, I'm going to take a break from the chickens, I might not be able to get that permit back. And then I've got this coop that I can't use because now there's a waiting list and that really concerns me. I think people will hang on to the licenses whether or not they have chickens and people are going to hoard them. And that is why I'm really concerned about the limit. I think there are more than 75 people in town who have chickens and I think you're going to create a situation where more people want permits than are available. And there's nothing in here that protects me as someone who already has chickens. And so that really concerns me. The other big concern I had was the public security inspection. And Pat and I had a really good talk about that and I feel much better about that. So really, I think that is my biggest concern is the number of permits. I have 20 chickens and so I'm comfortable with the 20 that are in this thing right now. And that's kind of where I'm at. So thank you for listening and thank you for doing everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Susan DeGinon Filippo.
Good chat.
All right.
Hi, I'm Sudha Jeff Filippo, Bible 3 Clear Lane. I've read the ordinance. I am 100% in support of it. I'm not a chicken owner, never will be a chicken owner. I'm good with everything that's in there. I love the part about the no roosters. The reason I'm here is we have roosters near us and they're driving me crazy. The annual inspections and licensing, yay for all of it. The one thing I did see in here, and I will claim ignorance again because I have been to a city council meeting since SSA 6 was established almost 20 years ago, is how long do people have to comply? I don't want to have to listen to roosters for the next six, eight, 10 months while the people near me get rid of the roosters. And I guess the second part, I obviously, that can be done, I believe, getting rid of roosters much more quickly than the inspections and the licensing and all that. Again, I would hope that doesn't drag on and on and on because those of us who don't have the animals deserve some peace and quiet and a safe environment, a pleasant environment to live in. So that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ashley Sarabia.
You were close, Sarabia. I am going to read something, so it might be a lengthy. So council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I made sure to take off work for this and I stand here not just for myself, but for a community of responsible backyard chicken keepers who are concerned about the direction this council is taking regarding poultry ownership. We understand the importance of maintaining public health and neighborly peace and animal welfare, but what's being proposed is not balanced. It is punitive and rooted more misinformation and assumption than in evidence or experience. Let me be very clear, we are not asking for a free for all. We are asking for reasonable regulations based on facts, not word of mouth. First, the proposed limit on permits, only 75 for the entire city, is arbitrary and exclusionary. Our community is growing, interest is sustainability, local food is growing, and local backyard chickens are part of that future. We propose starting with 90 permits with room for evaluation on expansion, not reduction. Second, the proposed limit on the number of chickens per household. A limit of 20 or fewer simply not viable for people trying to responsibly raise chickens for eggs, food security, and family agriculture. We ask that the limit be set 30 chickens per household, a reasonable number for maintaining a small, manageable flock without disrupting neighbors and the equivalent. I'd also like to bring up quails. I do not see the need for a limit on them, they are very tiny and quiet, but I do understand the larger fowls, they do make noise. Third, the proposed ban on roosters is an overreach. We understand concerns about noise, but many roosters are not significantly louder than dogs and unlike dogs, their noise is predictable and limited to daylight hours. The train is louder. Powellkey Airport is louder and causes more pollution than a rooster. If a total ban is deemed necessary, we ask for a grandfather clause, allowing existing roosters to live out their natural lives. To do otherwise is not only unfair, but also inhumane. Understand that rehoming roosters is almost impossible. You are asking me to end his life. I have to take him to a slaughterhouse for no reason but to live. That was his crime. If you cannot have empathy for that, then I cannot say that you truly are looking for the benefit of your citizens. By the way, his name is Puck. Doesn't deserve to die because someone thinks it's noisy. Fourth, the requirement for annual inspections with no costs invasive, costly, and frankly insulting. We propose that inspections should only occur if there is a formal complaint accompanied by documents, verifiable proof of violations showing excessive odor, odor, noise, or unsanitary conditions. Word of mouth is not proof. Allegations must be substantiated with, like any other nuisance complaint. And fifth, rather than imposing stringent regulations, I propose that the city invest in educational programs and resources for prospective chicken owners. Workshops on coop design, waste management, and chicken care can equip residents with the knowledge they need to succeed. Additionally, fostering a community of chicken owners can provide peer support and shared learning experiences. So in summary, I propose the following. 90 permits to start, 30 chickens per household, no blanket ban on roosters, or at least a grandfathering existing roosters, inspection only in response to documented complaints, and all complaints may be supported by objective evidence, not hearsay, and emphasis on education and community engagement. This proposal is fair, forceful, and respectful to both chicken keepers and their neighbors. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for reasonable evidence-based regulation that treats backyard chicken keepers with the same dignity and trust as any other resident. We are your neighbors, we are not a nuisance, and we are ready to work with you, not be punished by you for choosing a sustainable and responsible lifestyle. I want you to understand one thing, if you don't negotiate, some of you are sending innocent animals to a death sentence and their owners into unnecessary emotional pain. I remind the council that you people, as you called us, are human beings. It isn't about living in the 21st century, it's about living knowing my rights for freedom of how I wish to live are respected and protected. We are not Arlington Heights, we are not Mon Prospect, we are Prospect Heights. And I hope we can put an end to this in a way that respects all the citizens in this town. Thank you, I yield my time.
Next is Grace Martinez.
Hello, everybody. Grace Martinez, 1213 Highland Drive. I wanted to first say thank you for all the time everybody has put into this. I know we don't agree on everything, especially with regards to chickens, but I know that we can come together and find something that does make a solution for both, both parties in all of this. And I know that I feel very passionately on the side of the chickens and sometimes my passion may not always be well received and I apologize if that ever came across that way. I also want to just apologize for the lack of understanding in this process. I, like Christine, this is brand new. I don't know how this all works. I am kind of going through this with you guys for the very first time. I was under the understanding that some of the information that we had previously provided to the zoning board got forwarded to everybody here and as a result, I did not kind of recover it and redo it over and over for, to avoid redundancy. So hence not the information and the numbers that you had requested last time. Nikki is covering some of the annual inspection aspect and actually Ashley did a great job too. I agree with both what they're going to say, so I'm not going to repeat or go on forward with that based to avoid redundancy. When we met with the zoning board, we were all informed initially that this process was due to complaints within the city with regards to chickens. And you know, we provided information on those numbers as well as the codes as they currently stand with, you know, to protect the residents against noise, against odors, animals at large, vermin. I shared the benefits of keeping chickens that beyond, that it's not only on getting eggs, including they control pests like ticks and the Japanese beetles that actually have attacked my gardens by eating the Japanese beetle larvae. I have reduced skunks in my property that could, you know, be a nuisance as well, digging holes, et cetera. They provide fertilizer for our yards and gardens. They reduce food waste. They provide health benefits like increasing activity, which lowers risk for high blood pressure, cholesterol, diabetes. They improve mood and lower stress. They help bridge communities and communication. There's a running joke in the community, the chicken community online that when they get their first egg, they say, here's my $1,000 egg. Because it does cost that much to get your first egg. By the time you've input the money in for your coop, for the food, it takes six months to raise chicks to egg laying age. So you know, we're not raising it for the cost of the eggs, we are raising it to make sure that we have, you know, humanely raised animals that provide healthy food, that doesn't have added hormones, added chemicals, added light, sorry, I lost my place here, added artificial lightings that stimulate egg production. I'd let you know this, it's not about the costly eggs, it's about a way that we know where our food is coming from, making sure our animals are taken care of properly as well. I also provided Dan when the zoning board with results of petition created with almost 1,400 signatures of people wanting to keep chickens in Prospect Heights and enforce the existing codes with regards to the complaints that were brought initially. The silent majority want chickens and roosters to remain in the city. We offered up help as a chicken committee so when there were complaints, we can assist in resolving them. We are still open to this as long as we can meet in the middle without some of these strict harsh regulations. After the last meeting, there were questions about the number of birds impacted by the potential new ordinances. I questioned about homes being grandfathered in and was told nothing past the 12 months to get into compliance. I urged the council to reconsider this. I polled the members of the Facebook community here, Prospect Heights Backyard Chicken Group, and not everyone who has chickens is in this Facebook group, so I just like to point that out. And not everybody who was, is in the group answered the questions. So you know, you guys had mentioned that there's 75 homes that have chickens. I had 24 responses, which is about a third of the number of homes that answered these questions. I asked them how many birds they had and if they have a rooster. 15 out of the 24 responses had less than 20 birds. So depending on how you want to look at the percentages, it's 20% of the overall homes, the 75, or 62% of the 24% surveyed. Seven of the 24 homes had 20 to 30 birds and only two had more than 30 birds. There was 18 roosters out of those 24 homes and the number of birds that would go, the number of hens affected by the 20 was 108. So we're condemning 108 hens and 18 roosters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Katie King.
Hi, Katie King, 8 West Kent McDonald Road. The last meeting in Alderman made a dramatic statement that you people don't want any restrictions and you won't compromise. And I just want to say that this is a huge slap in the face to all of the effort between the community and the zoning board to present a proposal after a year of fact finding and education that at the time, we thought was fairly reasonable. I am confused why the recommendation from the zoning board to strike annual inspections was brought back because they had decided that they would not have the necessary headcount and safety training to carry out those required guidelines to help keep both the flocks and the people safe. There were, there was a lot of information brought about that and that was something that really confused me, hearing that we are proposing not to go with that original recommendation. I have stated multiple times that I enjoy hearing the sound of roosters in my neighborhood. I still think that the complaint process or a three-strike rule for those of people who do not appreciate that sound, I think that that would be sufficient. And lastly, I was pretty shocked hearing that the reason why we're going through this is to protect the silent majority of residents. This is a pretty popular dog whistle phrase, popularized by Nixon to falsely promote keeping soldiers at war, later used by Trump very often to promote a racist agenda. I'm saddened that the council chose to use that phrase and support other ordinance. I agree with the concrete proposals that I heard earlier from Ashley, which I feel is a fair outcome for the entire community. Thank you.
Next is Nikki Moylan.
Good evening, Nikki Moylan, 108 West Kennelworth. I just have two recommendations for edits for the current proposal, so I want to be clear that it's not me not liking everything, two recommendations. My biggest concern is actually with the annual inspections. I continue to see this as a gross overstep and violation of our community rights, not to mention a waste of our city's resources. It will cause undue burden and hardship on chicken owners who will have to rearrange their work schedules every year to find time in an inspector's schedule to be home for an inspection, even if they are short. As far as I can find in our city code, and I dug into it, the only other buildings that require annual inspections are businesses with liquor license and apartment slash rental units. So these are for-profit entities. No purely residential properties are regularly inspected annually. In fact, we don't require pools where human lives are at stake to be annually inspected. People do home improvement projects, as we know, all the time and it's up to citizens to get the required permits when doing such things. There's trust in the citizens for every other area of our city code, it seems, except this proposed one. So I want you to think about it from our perspective, if we're going to go through all the time, not if, when we go through all the time, energy, money, and effort to get properly permitted with the city, why would we then turn around and like do something like change our coop setup or do something against the code and risk a $100 to $750 fund per day to be out of compliance? I mean, that's just bonkers if someone would do that. So I have three suggestions because I want to be proactive here. I have three suggestions that would be more fair to law-abiding citizens who are getting their permits in the first place and their coops are in compliance. One, require a reinspection if a resident is going to make a structural change to the coop, just like we do for any other home improvement project, construction, et cetera. Since chicken coops are an accessory structure, we would fall under that same requirement. Two, the council could also add another safeguard for like, I'm sorry, I think Susan was reading, like if someone has a complaint, that could be grounds for a reinspection or just an inspection of when that complaint occurs. Three, this is actually one I think would work for everybody. You could require an annual inspection in the form of submitting a photo or multiple photos every year of your coop and your setup when renewing your permit. Photos can be obviously compared to the initial one, that we're not submitting the same photo every time. You could require a timestamp on it. And my husband's in construction and works all over both the city and the suburbs and he said this is, he verified that this is common practice of city inspectors who are unable to visit job sites because they can't get to all of them when inspections are required. So this is already like something that people do. So I think those three suggestions, I would really like you to consider them for how to amend that annual inspection while respecting the rights of us owners. Next, with the 75 permit number, and I did email you right these questions, I just have a lot of questions on it and I'm really concerned about putting this number in our city code right off the bat. I'm really going back to a pilot program on this. We don't really know that 75 is even the number that would cover existing chicken owners. My neighbor, when I was talking about this, actually said he was going to apply for a permit even though he doesn't have chickens, isn't thinking about getting chickens, but he's like 75. Well, what if I want chickens in five years? I'm going to apply for a permit and I'll, you're going to get a coop? He's like, I'll put a coop in my yard, I want to make sure I get a permit in case I want chickens. And I don't know how many other people are thinking that. So I have questions for you guys of, A, like what happens if there's more than 75 people who have existing flocks who apply? What is the, what is the course of action for that? And again, I'm not worried about other people, but I am worried about if there's more than 75 off the bat, like what is the course of action? And this would be just a really great place for a pilot program, get the current people permitted, you know, on this pilot and then maybe let's have another meeting, let's talk about if there needs to be more, what could be written in code? You know, I think if we write in code too quickly, that just scares me a little and I think that would meet both of our needs or all of our needs. And lastly, I'm in favor of what was said before about grandfathering in of just animals who will be eliminated from this proposal. I think we should really think about animal welfare and families who have these animals and don't want to just kill them. So thank you so much for just considering that grandfathering in would also not be in code. So thank you.
Next is Jennifer Brace.
Hi, thank you so much for having all of us here. I really appreciate all of the work that everyone has been putting into this. I do have chickens at my house. I'm going to admit that that's more of my spouse and my children's project. They're not able to be here today. And so I just wanted to express some of my concerns with the number of the 75 limit. I do agree with some of the comments that were brought up today, that that could limit the number of people. I talk to all people all the time about how we have chickens in our house and how they want to push it in their village and I think they love that idea. They ask where I live, could they come and move here? And I tell them, Bob, what a great community we live in, that we've got these large property sizes, we can have things like this, what a sense of community that we have here in Prospect Heights. We moved here from Wheeling specifically because of the larger lot sizes and for the sense of community. And so I think by limiting the number of permits, that we could be limiting those, you know, great people that are coming to our community. I also think that there are some issues with the 20-bird limit. We have around 20 right now, but I know that some have more than that and I agree with what others have said about having to euthanize these animals in order to be compliant. And then finally, the last thing that I wanted to talk about was the annual inspections. I do think it's a good idea for them to be inspected at some point, but I think that the resources to bring inspectors in and the risk of two contamination between coops is a major issue that should be thought about by the council. So I appreciate all of the hard work everyone's been doing on this issue, so thank you.
Genevieve Cherey?
Hi there, War II by Altam Road. Thank you to the council, all the zoning team, the city administrator, Joe Wade, for keeping us informed and being responsive to our messages and everybody here today being part of the process. I do appreciate what the council is trying to do, but I am disappointed that they have rolled back a lot of the PCBA's recommendations. They had this issue a lot longer than the council did. They heard a lot of testimony from both sides. One meeting was almost six hours. And as the zoning experts, they voted no to annual inspections unanimously, no to permit in household caps early in the process. And they also felt pretty strongly that people who currently have roosters or extra hens should be grandfathered in some sort of meaningful way. So I'd like to ask the council to reconsider its positions here. Regarding annual inspections, I echo the sentiments of everybody who's already spoken and written and the PCBA and their unanimous decision. This does set chicken keepers apart in a really discriminatory way and it puts an undue hardship on lawful residents. Not everybody has the same financial ability to take time off to handle these things and because zoning does not do this for any other animal or accessory structure, this is going to be a law that unduly burdens some citizens more than others, which makes it an unjust zoning code by the definitions that Mr. Peterson gave to us when he presented his proposed codes. So please drop the annual inspections or at least make them annual photo submissions as Nikki suggested. Neither side has the time for this. Regarding permits and household caps, again, nobody really knows how many households have chickens. I can say that the group that was referenced, the Facebook group of PH chicken owners has 150 members. That's just the people who were around Facebook and found us. Many have been afraid to speak up or are unable to. We were shocked that residents who currently have chickens were not being guaranteed a permit so long as they comply with the rules. We were also surprised that it wasn't being stated in the code that current chicken owners would receive first consideration due to some of the concerns that Nikki raised. We don't want this to be a free-for-all. We don't want this to be a free-for-all. I don't blame people who are getting nervous and want to try and get ahead of things and get a permit now because they're afraid they won't ever be able to have chickens if they don't do it now, but I feel like this part of the law is going to pit residents against each other and against you. So I would suggest we drop the permit cap. I also feel that we should be dropping the restriction about two or more houses being surrounded by chickens. Dogs are more disruptive and can be dangerous, and if we're not concerned about people being surrounded by them, you know, they've certainly woken my baby up, disturbed kids doing homework, and caused more headaches than roosters have. So I just want to reinforce that, you know, we want to be fair and equitable in the way we're handling this. Regarding grandfathering, I personally am against a fixed number cap on birds. I am against a rooster ban, but if the council is dead set on those measures, I do think we have to be fair and humane and grandfather in animals that are not creating a nuisance, not for 12 months, but for the rest of their natural lives. You have to have a heart for people who have skin in the game, people who have clean and happy and healthy animals that they got of good faith and that are part of their families. It is virtually impossible to rehome roosters or hens who are past their laying prime, and your ordinance prohibits slaughtering at home, so I'm not entirely sure what will happen to these animals. But I would like to hear the council address that question. We are not aware of other options. To be sure, we consulted the Adopt a Bird Network about options, and they said that these kinds of caps and bans create animal welfare crises. And I'm going to quote her directly here. "Animal shelters and sanctuaries in these areas become overwhelmed and find it results in the unanticipated allocation of resources and funds toward the additional housing to accommodate these birds for prolonged periods of time. Animal control will get continuous calls regarding dumped roosters." You know, we definitely don't have the extra staff or funds to be chasing down animals who are not causing an issue, so I think this recommendation is just practical. Furthermore, I do want to just clarify, I was disappointed by some of the things that city officials said in the last meeting, namely that we're acting illegally, implying that we're committing crimes or breaking the law. Thankfully, we're not. Three different attorneys confirmed for us that we're not. And the bit about the zoning law not explicitly allowing chickens is a gray area, I've been advised. In fact, Cook County does not consider chickens to be livestock. Furthermore, the zoning office has approved buildings that were explicitly labeled as chicken coops. And Dan was even quoted in the Daily Herald as saying chickens have been allowed here in Prospect Heights since before Prospect Heights was even a city. So they'll forgive us for thinking that we're law-abiding citizens. I hope that we can maintain a feeling of mutual respect during the rest of these proceedings. Whatever side you're on, you have to live together. And I agree with some of the speakers earlier who promoted education. I think that's a great idea. I have personally been asked to teach a class on chicken keeping at the Prospect Heights Public Library. I think it's a great idea, and I invite you all to attend. No annual inspections, no permit caps, yes to full grandfathering. Thank you.
That was all the submitted votes. Yep. Yeah, anybody else want to comment? Okay. Next item, we don't have a consent agenda tonight, or old business. Our new business, the first item is Resolution R 2537, Staff Memo and Resolution Approving Wolf Road Engineering Supplement to the Construction Engineering Agreement, the amount of $66,289.79. Need a motion to approve?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second, Anderson.
You have a motion and a second? Joe, can you speak to that?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is a request for additional funding for the Wolf Road sidewalk. It's been a very complicated project. I mean, we crossed the railroad tracks, we ran into utilities, it's as much of a storm sewer improvement as there's culverts in the area, stormwater management improvement. And the end result of this is there's been cost overruns to it. However, the congestion mitigation and air quality program that is partly funding this, and we have several different grant sources behind it, does allow that if, for reasonable expenses above the cost, if you make application to it for additional funding to your local transportation council, and we've checked with them, and they said there's money available. So essentially, this is a formality for us to get additional funding to address some of the project cost overruns.
And as I always like to point out, what is the ratio of what we spent on this versus the grants?
Oh, we're about 15% local funding and/or less, and about 85% state, federal, and even county and RPA money.
So it's about $600,000 for us and 4.2 million of that.
Correct. Right.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, a first and a second on the motion. Anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, Ordinance O 2512, the Staff Memo and Ordinance Amending Chapter 2 Definitions, Chapter 3 General Provisions of Title V Zoning and Amending Chapter 1 Animal Control of Title IX Police Regulations of the City Code Pertaining to Backyard Chicken Keeping in the R1 Single Family District. This is just a first reading, so there is no vote on this, but the council can have discussion on this. So I will ask if anybody has any questions or comments. Start on my left. Alderman Cameron?
No. I have no vote. So I have a question. When it comes out at the next meeting, will the ordinance be written already, or is there...
It's written now. So it is, it's written now, but...
So I guess I just want to clarify a few things, just to make sure I understand it. Will the ordinance show a timeframe for, after the ordinance is passed, for, let's say, 60 days for residents that are grandfathered in that currently have chickens may apply for a license? Dan, is that the way it's going to be written?
Staff will need direction. Typically, my research has showed that in other towns that have limits, it's a first-come, first-served on the applications. So if the council would desire a window for existing keepers to have them to get first shot, we can set up a time that can all be arranged on a calendar, and then once we know what we're dealing with, that would leave suggestions on how many either are available of the 75 that was recommended by council, or if I need to come back and say, hey, we're at 80 of existing, or we're at 60 of existing, and where are we at? But right now, as it's written, it would be a first-come, first-served on the application window.
If we could consider, after it goes into effect, a 60-day timeframe for them to apply for that already have chickens, those that already have chickens to apply for a permit, a license? So we can at least contain, you know, get a management on this whole thing.
The...
Application process.
Well, I mean, the application process, and that is administrative, that's not by code.
Right.
Correct.
So as far as how that's done, what has to be filled out, who can apply first, that doesn't require a change in the ordinance?
Correct. This is an administrative process to set up for the program. But if the council wants to guarantee a timeframe, it would need to be a direction in setting up that process. In terms of a direction to staff of how they would like to see that process function.
So who the first 75 are, we have leeway and order how to set that up. Because I mean, the intent is not to keep people that have them currently from here.
Right.
That's not the intent. But we don't want to, now, this is going to be opinion now, I'm not looking to have 200 people with chickens in town. The idea of a limit is to limit the use, this use within town. So is 75 the right number? I don't know. Maybe it's 78, maybe it's 84, maybe it's 67. I don't know. But by setting a number, we at least have that upper limit, and if we're able to, and we will accommodate everybody who has them now, not these people we were talking, heard brought up that are going to run out and try and build a coop, which they couldn't do without going to Dan to get a permit for it anyway. I don't think we're going to have this mad rush because either you have chickens now or you don't.
Right.
This ordinance will be passed two weeks from today, is the second reading, which then puts it into effect. At that point, administratively, Dan can work on with the council on how we can make sure that anybody who has them now is able to have them, and to make sure that falls within that 75. So that might address your concerns about people who have them now being able to keep them.
100% grandfather those that have chickens, for sure. And to timeframe it, just so we can manage the whole situation, after that 60-day period of time is, you know, we've gotten, they've gotten, they've gotten applications within that 60-period of time, 60-day period of time, is, do I understand that, Dan, you need another 60 days to approve the license that they're in compliance? Is that correct?
So the issue comes down to, we get the application in, because right now, I could not tell you exactly who's got coops and who doesn't, who has chickens, who doesn't. We have some who have given us their addresses during testimony, but it would be, we get the application, we'd have to schedule the, you know, the process to know how many we have. Then, to do this properly, all my staff is getting trained in how to perform inspections, proper PEE, disposable booties, hand sanitizer, all the things that were brought up during the discussion, we're going through training on to ensure that we can be as safe as possible with the residents' flocks. That process, if we do with the three inspections, if we're doing one a day each of us, you know, it's going to take, if we have 75, it's going to take about a month and a half to two months. Okay? That's just the timing. That fits into our schedule very easily. So I would say it would be about a two-month process to get through that initial review. It shouldn't, after that, it's just a matter, do they have their coops in the right places? Do they have their, what are they saying their bird limits are at, whatever the terms of the ordinance are? That's a very manageable format and takes into account some of the issues that were raised during the testimony.
So come September 1, if everything all works out, those 75 people that may have applied will obtain, they'll get a license if they were approved. The license will be approved.
No, they have till September 1 to apply.
Oh, that's right. Another 60 days.
It's not all hard.
Oh, another 9.
Right. Two months from the time the ordinance is approved, plus another 2.
Right, another 2 months.
So, once the ordinance is approved, the final recommendation, I still have to finish the final application form to meet what is the final ordinance, and that's going to take a little bit of time. Then we're going to announce that the application process is open, and then staff will set, inform both the council and administration and the residents with that time period is to get the applications in. And right now, it is written as a first-come, first-served, just because that's what it is. And we can change, the council can directly change that otherwise.
And then addressing...
So maybe, why don't we just stay on that topic so we don't jump all over the place? So is there anyone else on the council that wants to give priority on applications to chicken owners?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
But that's not going to be in the ordinance. That's going to be...
No, I'm just saying, like, if one is wrong, let's give...
We've always said that. I don't think there's been any disagreement.
Right. It's an administrative thing, but I would be in favor of having, yeah, I think the priority should go to the current chicken owners.
Okay, so when we open applications for the first 60 days, we're only taking applications from existing foul owners? Right.
Right.
Okay, Dan, do you think 60 days is a good window? Should it be 90 days?
I think it should be 60 days.
60 days should be adequate for, you know, to receive the applications from the existing...
There's a lot of different ways you can do this. Like, have the application state whether you have existing or if you're new. So then we would be able to figure that out without having to have two processes of licensed applications. And then we, you know, you prioritize those that are new, see how many there are with that, and we go from there. I don't want to create multiple timeframes for licensing, and I think we could do that. This is all administrative. As long as everybody's good with the goal trying to be that everybody who has them to be first in line.
Yeah, however you do it, I would be in, would be in favor of existing chicken owners having some sort of priority.
So anybody can apply?
Mm-hmm.
That has chickens.
That have chickens.
No, no, no.
That's what I'm saying, is...
No, no, we're not saying anybody can apply.
Anybody can apply, but they're going to check the box whether they have chickens or not. So then those are the people that are prioritized.
So anybody, anybody can apply, whether you have chickens or not, right? And then the people who have checked they have chickens will be first in the queue to get their inspections, to get the license issued?
Correct.
Okay.
If that number turns out to be 70, then 75 is not the wrong number, right? If there's 70 people with them?
Yep.
If there's 84, then we'll have to figure something out.
Right, I will be reporting that back to council as I come in.
Right, okay.
And there might be a verification, you know, do they really have chickens? Is there, does there wood on their chicken structure, still have the Home Depot stamp on it that they just bought it last week? We're going to figure that out.
Sign of a chicken, right? I mean...
Existing, it'd be, yes, we could be able to figure that out.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
I have a question. Within the 75, you know, we've had a lot of residents that have come and they're concerned for the chicken. What if they're not one of them that are part of that 75? Would we consider them, you know, because they have been coming to every single meeting, the PCBA meetings and stuff like that?
You have to...
What if, you know, we get a slew of, you know, applications, and, you know, say one of them doesn't get it, but they're the ones that are, you know, speaking out and saying stuff, you know, and talking their concern, and they're the ones that do not get the...
So if they have 30 chickens at home or no chickens at home, who do you want to make sure that their chickens are good to go? The ones that are there?
The ones that are currently chicken owners?
That they're current chicken owners.
Yeah, current chicken owners, correct.
If they want chickens and there's a leftover license, if there's enough for them to get one, then that's fine.
Well, the application process is either online or by paper. It's not any more difficult than getting a license for something else. So if you're telling them you have 60 days to do it, I would think if you want a license, you get right on that idea.
I'm sure there'll be a line at the door on the first day.
Yeah, well, I mean, we want to take care of them.
I agree.
So after the 60 days is over, and people choose not to get a license but have chickens, it'll be handled any other violation way? Okay, let's start with that. And then in terms of compliance, we were talking about 12 months from the time which the ordinance goes into effect? Is that correct?
For existing, right, existing. A new person would not have 12 months, they'd have to comply at day one.
Immediately, right.
But anybody who's existing would have 12 months to comply with the code.
Let's say from July 1st?
Whatever the date.
Yeah, whatever that is, whatever. Okay. I think that covers...
Wait, 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 let's stay on that topic.
Okay.
One at a time. So I have an issue with that part of the ordinance. So, I mean, I think that if we're going to be issuing a license, we have to have compliance. And we have to have compliance at the time we issue the license, not a year from now. I think that we need to make an exception for the roosters and the turkeys and the non-acceptable foul or non-acceptable animals. And so I think that there should be, that compliance needs to be reduced down to maybe 60 days, maybe 90 days, but certainly not more than that, only because we've got to get compliance. And I don't like the idea of licenses being issued at all when people aren't in compliance. So that's, you know, I have a concern about that, and I have a concern about that part of the ordinance. I have a problem with it. So I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
I would agree with the 12-month restriction. What I don't want to see is to try and take on individual items, like whether they have a rooster, or they have too many chickens, or too many of this, and having separate compliance timelines for each of those.
Right.
That's going to get too complicated. So considering everything that's involved, I would agree with the 12 months. That's my opinion.
Well, but, so, but we can't issue a license if people aren't in compliance.
Well, the ordinance is written, the ordinance is being written that you can. The ordinance is written that gives those people 12 months to comply. So that's built into the, into enabling the ordinance.
But that's what I have a problem with. So I have a problem with that because if we're going to issue a license, there has to be compliance. It says, Mr. Dolek, Alderman Dolek said, it's going to be too hard to enforce all these compliance issues. Well, let's see, we're giving you a license, but what did you comply with? And then, well, you still have your roosters, well, you still haven't gotten your coops done right, well, so how are we going to get all this done? We're not going to be able to do that. We have to have one compliance. That's it. License has to be done and issued when there is compliance, full compliance. So I don't agree that licenses should be issued at all until there's 100% compliance. So I have a big problem.
What if we reduce it to six months?
I don't, no, I, is, is this gonna be an annual license?
What if they don't get their license approved for six months, giving them all the time to, to get everything in, in check?
The license, the license.
And then issue the license to those seventy-five people that apply for it.
But again, the problem is, if these are gonna be annual, from January to December, it has to start on January first. So, if we're gonna have a license that starts on January first, we have to have compliance as of December thirty-first. Otherwise, we can't issue the license.
If I could just ask, I would actually like to ask our attorney, we can write an ordinance stating that we can grant you a license as long as you are compliant within this time period, whether it's twelve months or whatever. It doesn't mean that you can't have a license until you're compliant. We can write it in such a way that as long as you are compliant within this time period, we can grant a license. Is that correct?
I would object to that again, for the same reason that Mr. Alderman-Dolick, that you stated, we have now several layers of compliance. How are we gonna enforce it? We give you a license, now how are we gonna enforce that they became into compliance? We're not gonna be able to do that. That's gonna be impossible.
I think the, I think the, and Dan, you might be able to, Dan and I have worked on this and tried to go through some of this. So a license can be issued, and I think that's, it's almost a provisional license. You're getting a license with a condition that you're gonna be in compliance with all the terms of the city code within that twelve months. If you are not requi, if you are not in compliance, either by form of a complaint that's received or upon your annual inspection next year, that will be something that staff can easily determine because they do those annual inspections. So if they do receive complaints, hey, this person has twenty chickens, first of all, the, Dan will know that, A, do they have a license or not? And then they'll have the opportunity to either inspect on that complaint basis or on the annual inspection to ensure that they have met those or are in compliance. If they are not, they can have their, they can be fined under the code, they can have their licenses suspended or revoked, or they won't, and they, or they can be not, they won't be eligible for reissuance the next year. So there's a, a number of ways where that can be monitored and policed.
But the only way you really can monitor it is by the inspection the following year. That's really the only other way to monitor it, because otherwise you really don't know. I mean, you're guessing. Well, I make some complaint, well, that's likely or unlikely, whoever, you don't know.
I think, Dan, I have something.
For, for the initial existing chicken owners, the people that have them, one, part of the initial inspection, we talked about this, it's the ZBA, was to identify if there are structures, what structures or what the conditions are of those properties, we don't know. And in the part of the ordinance, it says, one of the reasons that it could not be renewed or revoked or denied is failure to comply with the provisions of an improved mitigation plan. And that's what we talked about, is here's what the, to learn what it is, give the residents an opportunity to bring those structures which they may not have known are not compliant, or those situations in. So we built that under that provision of the ordinance that would allow them a timeframe in which to comply, get their properties. Because, as was stated many times at the meeting, a lot of these folks didn't realize that their structures needed permits, where exactly they needed to go, and that was raised numerous times. So, from a staff perspective, once we do the initial with the existing chicken owners, backyard chicken owners, we don't see a problem with getting that because we'll have identified what it is. It'll have to be brought into compliance and checked by us, like any other inspection where we give them a disapproval or ask them to call us back to make sure it complies, whether it's a building code, whether it's electrical code or a property maintenance complaint, we give notices and then come back to see if they, the folks have complied. I don't see this as an unmanageable issue on this license, and that's the way that this was drafted, would be to give that ability.
Okay, so with, with the understanding that it's provisional, you won't know until the next inspection. If everyone's okay with that, then I'm okay if that's what everybody wants.
No, because they can call up, I, I'm gonna just guess what everybody's gonna do here. Anybody, everybody sitting in here knows what part they don't comply with. They got twenty-four chickens, their coop is up against the lot line, five feet from their neighbor's house, they know what the rules are. I would think that they're gonna know what they have to fix to comply because they want the licenses, right?
Well, right.
This is not like a license where somebody's getting it and they're doing it because we're making them get a license for something they don't care about. They care about this, they wanna comply. So, I'm, my guess is that most of these people are not gonna be non-compliant when it comes to that first inspection, right?
I mean, if everybody's okay with a provisional license like this, then that's fine. That's what, but I just wanna make sure that's what your intention is, because that's, because the way I read it, it was, it was of concern as to what you're actually, you know, what you're actually doing. So, okay, that's fine, it's a provisional license, and they understand that if their license gets revoked because they don't comply, they're not gonna be able to apply again for a year, and they may not be able to get a license, because there may not be any left.
This is a unique license where they're, they're here wanting to make sure they can get them. It's not a license like you're getting like a, oh, like a city sticker, right? Nobody wants to get the city sticker, so they fight it as long as they can sometimes. It's not stupid, it's, it's important. Significant to us, we can spend all night talking just about that. But, these, they're driven to want to make sure they're in a good place.
No, I, I hear you.
I would guess we'd have very high compliance day one.
Okay.
So I have a question, Dan. So this has been going on for a year and eight months. In all this period of time, we've talked about what the chicken coop permitting process has been, you've talked about it so many times. Location, have you had any chicken owners bring their chicken coop into compliance already in the year and eight months?
That's a good question. Since.
That would tell me right now how interested they are.
Since, since the close of the public hearing last fall, I've had three permit applications, two of them from new residents that wanted to establish that, but none from existing owners. So, at this point in time, I think part of it is that, based on the testimony given, based on the discussion, part of it was is they were waiting, I can only guess that they were waiting to hear what exactly the violations are, what the final approval is. So after, we've seen what the sizes are, they, the sizes haven't changed, the locations haven't changed, those issues haven't changed. So I, I would hope that the residents now, seeing that's what the requirements are, are gonna do the assessments of their yard and do a self-evaluation, okay? And then hopefully they would come in and, you know, start that process. But understandably, just as much as we've been in the middle of this, there's been no fin, final on these numbers. But now, we know what that is, what the recommendations are, so I would hope that those applications would start sooner than later.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Wendy?
I mean, I, other than what's been said, do we wanna make an exception on the compliance issue with regard to non-acceptable, non-acceptable animals such as roosters or turkeys? Or do we wanna just leave it all at one, the one year? I mean, what do you wanna do?
I think it's already been a year and a half, somebody said that.
Year and eight months.
This next year's gonna, gonna go by really fast.
I mean, whatever you wanna do, I, I don't, it's not a problem.
My concern is setting something up and establishing a norm that we're gonna all live within. And if that takes a year, it takes a year. I don't think that, there's anything wrong with that.
I mean, the idea is to comply as soon as possible, not to wait the whole year, but.
If, in the perfect world.
In the perfect world, right.
We're trying to be, we're trying to accommodate everybody as best we can, so I don't think a year is out of line. You know, again, I'm hoping that people don't wait because it's an expensive ticket. You get to that first year, you lose your license if you have, if you have a, a rooster. And you can't get back in line. So I mean, I, I think there's gonna be a lot of compliance with, with what comes from this ordinance pretty quickly. I don't think that's gonna be as big of the, an issue because the alternative is to, to lose your ability to have them. So I, I think people will comply.
I would agree with the one year. I think anything less than that is putting an undue burden on the, the current owners. So I, I would say rather than, again, rather than dividing things up into specific issues, everything should just fall under the one-year compliance.
Right, but still, they still have to do, follow the whole process from an administrative point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. And the fact that many of them, or may perhaps none of them, have brought the issue up to compliance, I don't think that should be presented as something negative against them. They're simply waiting to see what the final ordinance is. I mean, I would do the same thing, I wonder what the final number is.
Part of the application process is an inspection to see what you have. So, now thinking about it, that's a little, how, how do you comply ahead of time if you have to have the inspection anyway, so?
So I, yeah.
We're in such a close period of getting these licenses issued and inspections started that I think, sooner we can get that started, the sooner then people start to do it.
I just didn't want that to be presented as something negative against them, that while they haven't done anything yet, well, that's not their fault, they're, they're just waiting for the final outcome here, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the application itself will have a link on it to register with the Department of Ag. It'll be right on there, right?
That's pretty easy to do.
Yeah, it's easy to do, so they'll all be registered.
Um, I had one question, is, you know, when someone gets, you know, gets application and they get a license and stuff like that, and that was one concern, Christine was saying, if she moves, would that new owner, or would they have to start all over and get a new license and everything?
Yeah, the license doesn't transfer.
It does not, it's not transferable.
Not at all.
It's not transferable.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I don't know, until we go through this process once, we don't know how many people are gonna sign up, you know?
Right, some people might just say, forget it.
Any questions? Danielle?
Um, I mean, I think the list of items that we should probably still provide confirmation are, that we heard tonight, right? Annual inspections. Is anyone on the board? I mean, I'm in support of annual inspections.
I think if anything, annual inspections is purely listed as annual inspections, there is no definition of what an inspection is. I think that some of that stuff can be worked out in whether you have to be home for an inspection to happen or what an inspection actually entails. I know we've talked about PPE. I don't know why anybody's walking into a coop anyway. I mean, these things are open, they're exposed. There'd be no reason to go inside or even touch a chicken or be within ten feet of them. I mean, you're there to inspect the, the overall situation, not specifics. So, I think there's a lot that can be still worked out with inspections. I think they are, they should be done. But I think what they are and how they look still has to be formulated.
Okay, so good with annual inspections. And then, as far as the number of permits being issued, was it, Dan, was it structured in a way that then there would be like a waitlist?
It would be structured with a waitlist, and we, like all our village permits, we date stamp every permit application that comes in with a date and time. And as the order they were received, and then as they would come, as I, as it's being laid out right now, if a license gets either non-renewed, person moves, or whatever the situation, we would contact the first person in line, they'd have a window of opportunity to confirm, are they still interested in the permit? Are they not interested in, and then they would have to move quickly to get set up. That was the process. I checked with the Village of Monroe, I checked with Village, a couple other villages that have had similar requirements, and they handle them on a, that type of a basis.
So to get, to get a license, would you have to have already built a coop in your yard?
No, what they would do is submit application for their coops when they call up, and it's just like, okay, we're ready. Then we can work with them on the permit, and the permit for the coop, and the permit for the keeping of the chickens is a simultaneous process. Part of it is trying to control costs for folks so they don't have a large outlay of costs until they know that they have the ability to use it, okay? That was something.
So if somebody gets a permit, or a license, whatever, so if someone gets a license, they don't build a coop, they don't get any backyard fowl, after a year, like, how, how do we prevent?
Currently, aren't we talking about current chicken owners that have, they all have coops of some sorts, it might be wrong.
I'm just trying to discuss the topic of, everyone's gonna run out now, Prospect Heights, and get a, get a chicken coop license, whether they want chickens or not, just so they have the right to do that.
They can't do that because we've just limited it to seventy-five, and we're prioritizing only the people who already have chickens. So if the people who only have chickens are only sixty-seven, or, then there might be a few left.
We're just trying to.
If it's eighty-four, then we have to, and maybe the ordinance should be written that we can adjust the number.
Well, we can always adjust the number.
Well, we can always adjust the number, that's true.
Number, I just.
It's not in line, it's not chiseled and granted.
No, it's not chiseled and granted.
Right, no, I'm, I'm open to adjusting a number, I just don't want, because there's gonna be someone who's gonna come to us in ninety days, a hundred days, and say, oh my God, I didn't know that any of this chicken stuff was happening, because someone, a resident's gonna call their neighbor, they heard something, and then Dan's gonna show up, oh, I didn't know that you were doing any of these ordinances. I had no idea this was happening, I didn't apply, but I've got chickens and I wanna do it now, right?
Well, don't we send notice, are we sending notices of this ordinance out to any?
All I'm saying is, I'm trying to prevent, I'm good with, I'm good with the cap, right? Because we can always go back and change that, but I don't want there to be license issued to people on the what-if. Someday, I might wanna have chickens, so I'm gonna give the, my application, I'm gonna pay my fifty dollars, whatever. I make, I don't know what the cost for the applications would be, and I'm just gonna renew it in perpetuity every year because it's only gonna cost me fifty dollars, because someday I might wanna have chickens. And like, that's what I'm trying to prevent, like, we should be issuing, we should be issuing licenses to people who want to own them, not on the what-if.
That is part of it, is that part of the whole process for the waiting list folks, or the new persons that, okay, here's this, you've applied for it, you've got your building permit, you construct it, you show you're gonna have it, then the next step would be, by we verify that, that it's in use, and you move on with a granted license and renew that your next time. But we're not, we're not in the market for giving out licenses to people that aren't gonna utilize them.
So when we do our inspection, our preliminary inspection, in order to provide the license, if they're not making the effort to do all these things, we're not gonna give them a license.
So, there are two processes, and this is more for the new folks, you know, that are looking to get into it. You have the coop construction, placement, zoning side of it. Then you have the getting the, the license to get your birds in, confirming that, yep, we're done, you've got them, you have your birds in, we don't need to see you again, okay? It's, it's the way, because then, if someone hoard, hoards license, which is what was stated earlier, that's unfair to those residents that want to have it and will actively utilize it. So we would look to ensure that people aren't just grabbing licenses to hold on to them. Because it's unfair, it's unfair to others.
Provisions within.
And Dan, I'm sorry.
No.
I was gonna say, I, the ultimate safety net is that there would not be non-renewed if they have not gotten in compliance. So, if someone wants to run and get one to hold it, in theory, they'd have that year to get everything going. But if they went that year and went to go renew their, for their license, Dan saw they didn't do an inspection, they never got their permits for their coops, they never have chickens, they would not be renewed at that point in time. It would be, they would, they would essentially give it up by not taking steps to actually get the chickens and, and get the coops installed.
Because the license is actually for the chicken, not for the coop.
Correct, and, and building, just for everybody's knowledge, building permits are good for six months. So if you applied for your coop structure, your coop run structure, you'd have theoretically six months to get it built and occupied, okay? My guess is it wouldn't, depending on the type of structure, and there are different types of structures that are allowed in the ordinance, in mobile coops, for example, there's prefab that can be purchased. But if you are gonna build it, you've got a limited timeframe. Once that's built and you've got the spot for it, then we talk about the, we can just finalize the license for the chickens.
Right, that's two different things. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Um, I just, I think there was some question, you had talked about raising, people raising issues. The question about the amount of birds, I think that we've come to a good decision as to the number, the twenty per household.
Right, we did twenty.
I, I don't think we should.
Last week.
I mean, does anybody think we should change that?
No.
There was, I think there was only one person who spoke to raising it to thirty.
I think there was a couple, actually, but.
Well, I mean, there was facts provided as to how many people had the number of fowl, but only one person suggested a change to twenty. Like, to a specific number, right?
Right. So my question was to the council, does anybody have, wanna change that number?
I mean, last meeting, I think we had five oh that went for twenty, and five oh went for seventy-five licenses, so.
No, we're talking about number of chickens.
I know, I think we said twenty, last time.
Any other questions? So as it stands now, then it is as it's submitted, as it's written right now, is what would be coming back in two weeks for final approval. There's no vote tonight, this is just a presentation of it, second presentation. But the first reading of it, it's a process we have to follow, so that's what, that's what this is. So, two weeks from today is, or the, what's the date? Twenty-third, twenty-third will be the next meeting where the ordinance will be voted on. So with that, we'll go on to item C, ordinance oh twenty-five thirteen, staff memo and ordinance amending. chapter one, section one of title 12, fines, fees, and schedule to include recently passed and proposed ordinance changes. Again, this is a first reading, I believe we do this every year to update the fees, and, so it's all in one place versus being spread out throughout the, throughout our building code or zoning codes. So this will come back, if you have any problems or questions with it, please call Jill or Peter before next meeting. Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports, we'll start with Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To say it was a great event on Saturday, the Community Day event, all the, local organizations were, participated, and if you have the E-News, check the E-News, we've got the winner of the Community Day basket, wonderful little girl who, when she, she came, she, I think she's going to be a great lawyer because it had her name and it had her brother's name on the ticket, and she was arguing that, no, her name was first, so that's all that mattered. So she came and she picked up the basket, so Mercy, I believe, was her name. So she'll be in the, in the E-News this Friday. Also, I'd like to say on the 21st, Saturday, we have two wonderful events, the first from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon is going to be our annual shredding event at the metro station. Please, this is just for residential shredding, for those important documents that you don't want out there, it's a total of six, if you think of jewel paper bags, or the old paper bags for groceries, six of those, so that's about the limit per household that's allowed. Also, we have another wonderful event that's going to be going on later in the day, our, our annual block party event with the, the Park District. We have two fantastic bands, Modern Day Romeos and Lady Gaga will both be playing on Saturday. It's a great event, great music, a great community event, so please, if you can, on Saturday, shred your items in the morning, and then go rock out with the block party in the afternoon. And that is at Lyons Park, the Park District. Thank you.
Dan?
A couple of things, a quick update for the City Council, I've been speaking with Michael Blue on the zoning rewrite, I've received four chapters that now I have to review, and we will be bringing some of those to the zoning board just for initial review. So that's still moving, it's been a quiet couple months, but I did, I have received four of the chapters, so I'll let you know, and then be coming forward with that. Secondarily, the projects for the city, scanning of historical documents as well on their way, we sent 103 cubic feet boxes of records, old building permit records that are in the process of being scanned, and we've entertained, entered the agreement with LaserFISH, and we're in the process of doing our internal, already scanned documents into the LaserFISH, and we've just met with LaserFISH reps and microsystems who are now going to be tweaking the scanning so it can go straight into the LaserFISH instead of ours in the middle. So that project's moving along. And then that's all I have at this time.
Joe?
Thank you, yes, two grant announcements. First of all, there's a $1.6 million Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant that was awarded to the city, this is an 80/20 local match, and this is for something that is identified in the comprehensive plan, probably 10, 15 years ago, and that's a Camp McDonald sidewalk running from Wheeling Road to Wolf Road, it'll serve as well as the Rob Roy neighborhood, the neighborhoods across the street. And that, ideally, we, we think we might get that underway next year. The second is also a thank you, this is not so much a grant, but a legislative initiative, and it was sponsored by the local Senator Mark Walker, and this is $420,000 that the city made application for, and that is for the Hillcrest Overflow Stormwater Management Project, as council members are familiar with, and significant stormwater management event, that area between Hillcrest, Hillcrest and also behind Kennelworth, running from, oh, roughly from the Hillcrest Lake over to Wheeling Road, has severe flooding, couple this with the city money that we've, we've already reserved in the capital improvements program, we'll be able to get this improvement underway. So a good week for capital improvements, those are two projects that have been on the books for a long time, and now we have a funding source.
Is there a chance of doing that one this year, or no?
Oh, it could be kind of tough, there's, there's permit, permitting takes quite a while, and we'll have to go through an MWRD process, it's not a bad thing, but...
Yeah, so that's the answer is no to that.
Right, sorry.
All right.
No.
Deputy clerk?
I'll do it for me.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, October 1st this year, 2025, will mark the 35th anniversary of the Prospect Heights Police Department, and to honor and commemorate this achievement, the police officers that wear physical badges will be wearing anniversary badges to, to show that until October 1st, 2026. And lastly, yesterday on Sunday, the police department participated in the Law Enforcement Torch Run, which is a, an event to benefit the Special Olympics in which law enforcement officers carry the torch from one agency to another. So we pick up the torch from Wheeling, carry it down Milwaukee, and hand it off to Glenview to commemorate the Special Olympics and raise awareness. That is all, thank you.
Thank you.
I see, I actually seen that yesterday, I was wondering why all these cops were going by, and then I saw there was a guy with a torch with a dog, so...
Yes, yeah.
That was very interesting to see.
We do that every year.
Any comments?
No report.
Wendy?
No, no report.
Anybody? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I like to say we got through this process, I mean, it's, not everybody is going to be happy, I'm sure of that, but sometimes that's how they grade a negotiation, when nobody's happy, it, nothing, it's not important, don't worry. But that, it, it worked, and I...
What about the approval of warrants?
Say again?
Wait, do I have to finish the approval of warrants?
Oh, yeah.
As I said, we're...
That was mine.
We're almost, we're almost done.
Almost done. So anyway, we have the approval of the expenditures and wire payments, if the deputy clerk can read those.
Yes, the approval of expenditures tonight, there's a total of $322,750.78. There are a couple wire payments tonight, one, a May 30th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $195,198.32. A debt service payment series from 2013 for $10,066.25. A debt service payment series 2020, $39,250. A debt service payment 2018 for SSA 6, $13,361.25. And that brings us to total warrant tonight amount of $580,926.60.
Thank you, we need a motion to approve.
So moved, Anderson?
Second, Cameron.
Motion and a second, any questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes, do we have any public comments on non-agenda matters?
None tonight.
We will have an executive session, five minutes, and there'll be no action from that, so there'll be nothing, there's nothing, I can promise you, absolutely without a doubt, nothing to do with chickens, so just so you know.
So wait, what he's saying is we're going to step out of executive session?
Well, they can either...
Right, and then, so we're not closing the meeting yet, so we're going to go out for executive session?
We're going to close it and come back?
And then come back and then close it, so that's what he's saying.
We'll be back, but there'll be no action.
When we come back, there's nothing left on the agenda other than to adjourn.
I'll read this one more time. For purposes of 5ILS, section 120 slash...
Henson...
Was that, 2C1?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second, Cameron.
Second by Cameron, first by Dash, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
We were in executive session for the purposes of personnel, there's no action to be taken, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And, send him a second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned.